All right, welcome everyone. Good evening. My name is Morgan Smith and I'm the Town Administrator for the town of Charlton. I hereby call our special town meeting to order. Thank you for coming this evening to exercise your right to vote and to determine how the town spends your tax dollars. Before we conduct our business, please rise and remove your hats and join me in the pleasure of reading through our flag. And please make standing Catholic heads for the signs.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please make standing and join me in the moment's silence for one of those veterans and active service duty members who have paid those serving our country and defended our freedoms so we are able to live in peace. Now, this is how it started today in 1797. What happened? USS Constitution launched in Austin. It was the first news story, so that's our historic events for today. As we begin our meeting, our first meeting members on stage, so starting on your left to my right, we have the board of selectmen members. This is David Center, Mr. Steve Golis, this is Bazi Zorowski, Mr. Olverowski, and Pete Metzett, who is the current chair, our town administrator and littlest, and our new town council, please join me in welcoming Bob Henning, a first person meeting ever here in Charlton. Our town clerk, Karen McCoy, town finance director, Ashley Overston, and the finance committee chair, Kamasi, Jeremy Foskett, Jamie Terry, Kristen Lohier, and Jim Del Cio. Thank you all for joining us tonight. I thank you everyone on the stage to prepare for meeting and to run. Non-voters are asked, please take a seat in front in the designated area for non-voters and will however call out the non-voters in the back. State Representative John Marcy and State Representative Paul Frost are happy to have you both and feel free to take a seat under your perituse. All registered voters shall remain seated with no side conversations. Please be respectful of those around you although today, that looks like I'm under again, I have a problem with them. It's my duty to remind you that in Massachusetts general law chapter 39, section 17, if you fail to comply with our established meeting protocols, you will be warned and then removed if necessary. In the event of an emergency, please exit the room carefully. There are several points of interest to refer down the front. And let's briefly review the voting procedures for town meeting. When considering action on a hard call, call for motion and then a second. I may ask for the recommendation of the finance committee or the selectmen or other boards if appropriate, and then hold a court and discussion on the matter. If you wish to speak, please approach the microphone and wait your turn. Say their name and residential address in Charlton and will be recognized by a meeting auditor. Once I've recognized you, you may address your comments or questions to me and share relevant information on the topic being discussed. I will call upon town officials or administration to respond as appropriate. You will have three minutes to speak. Please limit your remarks to three minutes by preparing your thoughts and comments and questions in advance. I'll use the timer on my cellphone as backup and this will ensure that all voters have an opportunity to participate. Discussion of any issues specifically not outlined in the warrant will not be allowed. We will report matters of personality. And please note that it is not appropriate to refer to other voters by naming or calling upon others to speak during the meeting. All questions and discussion must be restricted to matters of business at hand, specifically the articles that are posted in the warrant for which the main motion has been made. The article may not be amended, but a motion may be amended. So once a motion has been made and seconded, a motion may be amended by a majority vote in town meeting. If you wish to make a
And if you already know that you're planning to do so, we have forms up here at the front. You could take one. It must be submitted in writing to me during the discussion of the main motion. All right. When your vote is called, your voting device will be activated. You're going to press one for yes, in green, two for no, in red. You can press multiple times. The last time you press is the vote that gets recorded. So your device will show the word okay when your vote has been received, and we're going to use a test question to practice. And hopefully you can see the board. So our test, our test question is, did you see the comet this month? Vote one for yes or two for no. Ten seconds remaining. Okay, please stop voting. And 15 people saw the comet. 39 did not, along with me, up on the top of Dresser Hill Road. If everyone had shut their lights off, maybe we would all would have seen it, but 39 did not. Okay. If anyone had a problem with their voting device, let me know now, please, before we continue. Okay. I will now, I'm going to defer the return of the warrant and go right to Article One, appropriation of funds for unpaid bills of a prior fiscal year. To see if the town will vote to raise by taxation, transfer, or borrow and appropriate a sum or sums to accounts to be specified at town meeting for payment of one or more prior fiscal year's bills not paid due to an insufficiency of appropriation or for other reasons, or take any action relative thereto or thereon. This is sponsored by various town departments. Do I have a motion?
Madam Moderator.
Yes.
I move that the following prior year bills not previously paid due to late billing be paid from the following fiscal year 2025 accounts as follows. $685.41 from the fiscal year 2025 town clerk's expense account to the universal tag. $760.27 from the fiscal year 25 fire EMS expense account to the shipment's fire equipment. $4,564.24 from the fiscal year 25 sewer maintenance expense account to the Surf Pro of Northern Rhode Island. And finally, $580.24 from the fiscal year sewer maintenance expense account to the New Horizons Communication.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. May I have the recommendation of the finance committee?
Finance committee approves this motion.
Thank you. And the recommendation of the board of selectmen?
The board of selectmen supports this motion.
Thank you. A majority vote is needed. Is there anything to be said on this matter? Hearing nothing. All those in favor, please signify by voting yes. Those opposed, please signify by voting no. Please stop voting. Did you stop before I said stop? No? Okay. We have 53 votes in the affirmative, no votes in the negative, so the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Article Two, inter-intra-departmental transfers and/or appropriations for the FY 2025 budget to see if the town will vote to raise by taxation, borrow, or transfer and appropriate from available funds, including so-called free cash, and/or funds previously appropriated to other uses, a sum or sums of money to accounts and for purposes to be specified at the town meeting, or take any action relative thereto or thereon. And Article Two is sponsored by the board of selectmen, the town administrator, and various departments. Do we have a motion?
Madam Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Zorowski.
I move that the following sums be raised by taxation or transferred, whichever is indicated below, and appropriated to the following accounts for any purpose for which funds may be expended from the latter accounts, and to authorize the board of selectmen, town administrator, or his or her designate or other appropriate town official, board, commission, or committee to enter into such contracts, including leases, and to take such other action as may be necessary or advisable to effectuate the purposes of the foregoing vote, each item being considered a separate appropriation. $15,000 from the building fines and enforcement RRFA Fund 1513 to FY 25 Special Counsel in order to cover legal expenses. $150,000 from free cash to the FY 25 OPEB Trust, other post-employment benefits in order to fund the OPEB Trust per our funding plan. $84,000 to raise and appropriate for the FY 25 police wages for dispatcher and police officer. $26,000 from raising and appropriation for the FY 25 group health insurance for the benefit costs for the dispatcher and police officer. And $750,000 to raise and appropriate to the capital stabilization fund in order to fund the stabilization according to our reserve policy.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there anything to be said on this matter? Hold on, I want the recommendation of the finance committee, please.
Finance committee supports this motion.
Thank you. And the recommendation from the board of selectmen?
The board of selectmen supports this motion.
Yes, Mr. Sage, would you introduce yourself and your residential address?
Stephen Sage, Lincoln Point Road, Charlton. First thing that struck me are three questions. One, the dispatcher and police officer salaries seemed kind of low for two people, so I was wondering about that. And I was, I can't remember when we've had a capital stabilization fund. I always knew we had a stabilization fund, but I'm questioning raising and appropriating monies for that. Is there going to be an increase in our tax bills in the future due to this? Or is there other monies that are going to be used to cover those two items?
Thank you. So we have two clarifying questions. Mr. Golis, would you respond, please, relative to the salary of the police officer being reflected in this amount?
Yes, both these positions are funded for half years, so one is to be scheduled to begin on 11/1/24 and the other one is to begin 1/1/25. So that's why those salary items seem low.
And the second question, relative to raise and appropriate, does that, does that result in an increase in taxes?
The, the amount to be put in would be from taxation, yes.
So it's from taxes as already established?
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sage. Is there anything further to be said on that matter? All right, hearing none. Please take out your devices and to vote in favor, press the green button. Vote no, plus press two. Please stop voting. We have 51 in the affirmative, one voting no. For 50, total of 52 voters, so we're, we're missing one voter from the first article. Don't leave this early in the meeting because we do have a door prize, so at the end of the meeting, you could win the goodies that I picked up at the chocolate shop in Auburn up here at the front, so stick with us. Okay. Article Three, amendments to the FY 2025 budget to see if the town will vote to amend the fiscal 2025 budget voted at the May 2024 annual town meeting or take any action relative thereto or thereon. Do we have a motion?
Madam Moderator.
Yes, Ms. Zorowski.
I move that this article be passed over indefinitely.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We have the recommendation of the finance committee?
The finance committee supports this motion.
Thank you. And the recommendation of the board of selectmen?
Board of selectmen supports this option, this motion.
Thank you. Because we have no amendment proposed for the FY 2025 budget, we only need a majority vote. Is there anything to be said on this matter? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, vote one for yes. Those opposed, vote two for no. All right, please stop voting. We have 51 in the affirmative, two voting no. See, that person came back for the door prize, so stiff competition out of 53 again. Great, thank you. Article Four, miscellaneous capital items and related contracts to see if the town will vote to raise by taxation, borrow, or transfer from available funds, including so-called free cash and funds previously appropriated to other uses, and appropriate a sum or sums to purchase capital items and/or for service repair, improvement, architectural, construction, renovation, improvement, and/or other contracts related to town buildings, facilities, or property, or to municipal services, and to authorize the board of selectmen, chief procurement officer, and other appropriate town official, board, commission, or committee to enter into such contracts or leases, and to take such other action as may be necessary or advisable to effectuate the purpose of such votes, or take any action relative thereto or thereon. This Article Four is sponsored by the board of selectmen and various departments. Do we have a motion?
Madam Moderator.
Yes, please, Jeremy.
I move that the town vote to transfer and appropriate the following amounts to the following department's respective accounts for fiscal year 2025 capital budget to be expended for the following purposes, each item being considered a separate appropriation, and to authorize the board of selectmen or chief procurement officer to enter into such contracts, including leases, and to take such other actions as may be necessary or advisable to effectuate the purposes of foregoing vote. $200,000 from free cash to structural repairs for, to the number two schoolhouse. $250,000 from free cash for the townwide public safety radio system project. $50,000 from free cash for town hall improvements. $80,000 from free cash for technology replacements and improvements. $10,000 from free cash for library generator design plans. $50,000 from free cash for the replacement of the fire pond cistern pipe and screens.
Thank you, Mr. Foskett. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. May I have the recommendation of the finance committee?
Finance committee supports this motion.
Thank you. And the recommendation of the board of selectmen?
The board of selectmen support this motion.
Thank you. A majority vote is needed. Is there anything to be said on this matter? Good evening. Your name and residence, please?
Hi, Madam Moderator. I'm Kevin Foley, 164 Burlingame Road.
Thank you, Mr. Foley.
So is this motion, if approved, these are not separate items? These are all in its entirety?
They would all be approved together in the first table, in the first motion?
Can they elaborate more on what the $200,000 for this schoolhouse will address?
Absolutely. So I'll ask Andrew Golis to speak to that, the schoolhouse structural repairs.
Yeah, Madam Moderator, that will be for roof replacement, for roof shoring, for exterior improvements, and for repointing of the chimney and the foundation.
Okay, lots of work. Thank you. Okay, hearing no further questions. We'll vote on this matter, so if you take your voting device, all those in favor, please press one. Those opposed, please press two. And this takes all items together on this table. Thank you. Please stop voting. We have 47 in the affirmative, five voted no, of a total of 52 voters. May I have a second motion relative to Article Four?
Madam Moderator.
Yes, please.
I move that the town vote to transfer and appropriate the following amounts to the following department's respective accounts for the fiscal year 2025 capital budget to be expended for the following purposes, each item being considered a separate appropriation, and to authorize the board of selectmen or chief procurement officer to enter into such contracts, including leases, and to take such other action as may be necessary or advisable to effectuate the purposes of the foregoing vote. $255,000 from free cash for the replacement of the police cruisers and technology. $30,000 from free cash for the replacement of the police firearms.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. May I have the recommendation of the finance committee?
The finance committee supports this motion.
Thank you. May I have the recommendation of the board of selectmen?
The board of selectmen support this motion.
Thank you. A majority vote is needed. Is there anything to be said on this matter? Yes, Mr. Sage?
Stephen Sage. I have never in my time here seen a replacement of police firearms. I was interested in finding out how many firearms they're talking about possibly replacing, and once they're replaced, what happens to the old firearms?
Okay, thank you. I'll call on the police chief to please respond to that question.
Good evening, Chief Dan Dowd. Basically, what we're looking to do is replace all the firearms for the full-time officers, give or take a couple extra in case there's repairs needed or guns are out of service. As far as what happens with the leftover firearms, the ones we currently have, we, the vendor that we choose to purchase the guns from normally purchases them to offset our costs.
So you participate in a buyback program yourselves? You sell, you sell them back to the vendor and it offsets the cost of the new purchase?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Can you elaborate on what the vendors do with those guns that they buy back?
Ah, I don't know. They're federal firearm licensed dealers. It's like buying a car. They're free to sell it to whoever's licensed and they could sell it to some gun dealers out of state. They could sell it to local gun dealers. I don't know what they'll do with it. I can't predict what they'll do with it. Sometimes there's a market overseas for firearms and what we try to do is get the best value for the firearms that we're selling, what they do with them, but they do have to go through a legal process. They don't, we're not going to be sold in yard sales and things like that.
Thank you. And you also were asked about the number of firearms. You said for all police officers. How many is that?
Well, approximately about 24 firearms.
24 firearms. Thank you very much.
Dan Stevens, 107 Coben Road.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
How old are these firearms?
The ones we currently have are approximately five years old.
Are they worn out?
They're decent firearms. That's the reason why I'm trying to get, replace them now while they get a value to get to these optics.
What sort of round count do we have?
I'm sorry?
So do we
What sort of round count do we have through them?
So if you could please go through the moderator, if you could, so everyone can also hear the questions. Thank you. So do you keep a round count on when the guns are fired? Is that how, how do you determine their
Well, typically, they go through annual training, four times a year, give or take. Some people need more rounds than others. I couldn't give you a specific what each number of rounds have been through the firearm.
And so you're replacing them at a five-year interval? Is that typical?
No. The reason is the improved optics is something that I've been approached about. The idea is they have a, as one's eyes get hotter and hotter to see, they have on the front end, they'll have like a magnifying glass, bear with me, and so they get on target quicker and there's a red dot. It's not a magnifying glass, but the idea is it's improved optics.
And may I ask, are these handheld firearms?
Yes, ma'am.
They're like a sidearm or?
They are.
Okay, thank you.
I know I'd sooner trust one with 2,000 rounds through it than a brand-new one, but why aren't these available to the townsfolk just like other surplus equipment? You probably get more than a gun
Because I'm not a, sir, I'm not a federal firearms licencer. I can't sell them to other people. They have to go through an FFL.
We can go, there's guys around we could go through, but they haven't been shown as available to us.
So from what we under
We're paying for them.
Well, we paid for them and we're selling them back, so it will reduce, reduce the cost.
But we will probably pay more than the guy has given them, given them for it.
Right. I think the town is not licensed to sell the weapons.
No, but we can go through a different
Through a dealer.
Firearms license guy.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on this matter? Okay. Well, we have a motion, a second. We've had a good discussion, clarifying. All those in favor, please vote one. Please stop voting. We have 49 in favor, six voted no, for a total of 55 voters. Thank you. May I have a third motion for Article Four?
Madam Moderator.
Yes, Ms. Lamir.
I move that the town vote to transfer and appropriate the following amounts to the following department's account for the FY 2025 capital budget to be expended for the following purposes, each item being considered a separate appropriation and to authorize the board of selectmen or chief procurement officer to enter into such contracts, including leases, and to take such other action as may be necessary or advisable to effectuate the purpose of the foregoing vote. $75,000 from free cash for a fire station alerting system at Station One.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. May I have the recommendation of the finance committee?
The finance committee supports this motion.
Thank you. May I have a recommendation of the board of selectmen?
The board of selectmen support this motion.
Thank you. A majority vote is needed. Is there anything to be said on this matter? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please press one for yes and two for no. If you're opposed, please vote now. Please stop voting. We have 50 voting in the affirmative, four voted no, for a total of 54 voters. The motion passes. And finally, do I have a fourth motion on Article Four?
Yes, Madam Moderator. I move that the town vote to transfer and appropriate the following amounts to the following department's accounts for FY 2025 capital budget to be expended for the following purposes, each item being considered as a separate appropriation and to authorize the board of selectmen or chief procurement officer to enter into such contracts, including leases, and to take such other action as may be necessary or advisable to effectuate the purpose of the advisable to effectuate the purpose of the foregoing vote. Three hundred thousand from free cash for a street sweeper, thirty thousand from free cash to repair or replace the salt shed roof, seventeen thousand from free cash for a tractor replacement, sixty thousand from free cash for the purpose of, for the purchase of a F-250 pickup truck, fifty thousand from sewer retained earnings for upgrades to the North Main Street Pump Station.
Fifty thousand, yeah.
Fifty thousand, and five hundred thousand from the sewer retained earnings for the plant headworks project.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. May I have the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee supports this motion.
Thank you. May I have the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen support this motion.
Thank you. A majority vote is needed, and the floor is open for discussion. Mr. Sage.
A one-paragraph explanation of what a plant headworks project is about, please?
Okay, do we have someone here from the Sewer Department who can explain what a plant headworks project includes?
Russ Jennings, 53 Jennings Road, Sewer and Water Commission. The plant headworks project is a recommendation that engineering firm has come up with to better run the plant, produce better results so that we can meet our goals as far as purification much easier. The headworks building is the first point of contact that sewage would reach the plant at. It's been deficient for years, and this will double the capacity. So that's a very brief explanation of it. So hope that suffice.
Thank you. Is there anything further? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please vote by pressing one. Those opposed, press two. Please vote now. Ten seconds remaining. Please stop voting. We have fifty voted in the affirmative, five voted no, for a total of fifty-five voters. And the motion passes. All right, thank you. Article Five, Replace Engine Two. This was a borrowing article, to see if the town will vote to appropriate eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the purpose of replacing engine two and for all other costs incidental and related thereto. To determine whether this appropriation shall be raised by borrowing or otherwise provided, or to take any action relative thereto or thereon. This was sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Madam Moderator.
Mr. Corones.
I move that we pass over this article indefinitely.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. May I have the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee supports this motion.
And a recommendation of the Board of Selectmen, please.
The Board of Selectmen support this motion?
Thank you, so the-
But, Madam Moderator, the reasoning behind it isn't because the need has gone away.
Correct.
So it's because the initial cost, the initial prices we're getting far exceeded this eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Right, so I believe-
It's going to come back again, but it's going to be a much higher number.
Thank you. So I believe this article will come back to us at town meeting in the spring, but there is a motion to pass it over indefinitely and a second. And do we have anything to be said on this matter? So because we're not actually borrowing, it's only a majority vote needed. All those in favor, please vote yes by pressing the one. All those opposed, please vote no by pressing two. Please vote now. Ten seconds remaining. Please stop voting. Fifty voted in the affirmative, four voted no, for a total of fifty-four voters. So the motion carries. Article Six, Transfer To and From Stabilization Funds, to see if the town will vote to transfer and appropriate some or sums to or from the stabilization funds, or take any action relative thereto or thereon. This is sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. Do I have a motion?
Madam Moderator.
Yes.
I move that the town vote to transfer and appropriate the following sums to and from the following accounts and funds. Each such transfer to be considered a separate appropriation. Seven hundred thousand dollars from free cash to the General Stabilization Fund to fund the stabilization account in accordance with the reserve policy.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do I have the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee supports this motion.
Thank you. May I have the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen support this motion.
Thank you. A majority vote is needed. Is there anything to be said on this matter? Mr. Sage.
I'd just like to commend the town offices for providing the public with the balance of funds after the end of this. In the past, I used to have to always ask for those numbers. Also, the fact of you're telling us the, what the abbreviations stand for in the front, and also the first page of the explanations. It's a vast improvement from several, well, I guess at this point, I can say many years ago when that information was not provided. So well done.
Thank you. And I will also offer that there was a very nice presentation done in advance of the meeting with an explanation that this dollar amount actually slightly exceeds the reserve policy and puts us in a better position for bonds, for our bond rating. Okay. Is there anything else to be said? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please vote one for yes. All those opposed, please vote two. Please vote now. Ten seconds remaining. Please stop voting. We have forty-eight voted in the affirmative, three voted no, for a total of fifty-one voters, and the motion passes. Article Seven, Bylaw Amendment, Chapter 115, Buildings and the Numbering thereof, to see if the town will vote to amend the Chapter 115 Buildings Numbering by adding Section 115-3 Policy. The Board of Selectmen at a regular meeting of the Board approve a policy for determining the schema for assigning numbers to buildings, and from time to time, may amend said policy, or take any action relative thereto or thereon. I should have read the quotes in. So there's a quote prior to the Section 115, and may amend said policy, end quote, or take any action relative thereto or thereon. This is sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. Do we have a motion?
Madam Moderator.
Yes.
I move that Article Seven being accepted as written.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. May I have the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen approves and supports this motion.
Thank you very much. A majority vote is needed. Is there anything to be said on this matter? Hearing none. All those in favor, please press one for yes. Those opposed, please press two. Please vote now. Ten seconds remaining. Please stop voting. We have forty-three in the affirmative, ten voted no, for a total of fifty-three voters, and the motion passes. Okay, Article Eight, Zoning Bylaw Revision, 98 North Side Road, Map 24-A-4.4. Zoning map change from Business Enterprise Park, a BEP zone, to Agricultural/Rural Residential, ARR-60. To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning map, Section 200.3.1.1B, by making the following changes. Amend Assessor's Parcel Map 24-A-4.4, consisting of plus or minus 4.8 acres currently zoned Business Enterprise Park to Agricultural/Rural Residential, ARR-60 District. The proposed zoning map change is as shown on the attached map, or take any action relative thereto or thereon. This is sponsored by Mr. Waldo Eastman, who's the property owner. And the map we're referring to is the first map in your packet. Again, changing from a BEP to a Agricultural/Rural Residential. Do we have a motion?
Josh Safer, 97 Blood Road.
Josh, are you making a motion?
No, I was just asking if the property owner could speak to what the purpose or function of the changes.
We can't discuss the article until we have a motion and a second. Do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Article Seven as written.
Article Eight?
Eight, second.
We have a motion and a second. Okay, now, Mr. Safer. You were asking for the property owner to please speak on behalf of the motion. Hi, good evening.
Waldo Eastman, 98 North Side. I'm not sure when it was zoned BEP, but if anybody knows North Side Road, it's really not a business street. It was probably zoned that way because my family had a sawmill there, which really hasn't been functional since the mid-'90s. Just like to get it zoned agricultural, so potentially I could put a house there.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. May I also ask for the recommendation of the Planning Board?
Bill Fontaine, 19 Pine Land. I'm on the Planning Board. Planning Board approves this motion as written.
Thank you. So because it's a zoning change, it requires a two-thirds majority. Is there anything further to be said? Hearing none. Please take out your voting devices. Please press one to approve the motion, two if you oppose the motion. Please vote now. Ten seconds remaining. Please stop voting. We have fifty-one in the affirmative. No one is opposed out of a total of fifty-one voting. Motion carries. Thank you. Article Nine. Zoning Bylaw Revision-92, 98, and 106 North Side Road, Map 24, Block A, Lots 4, 4.1, and 4.4. Zoning map change to remove three lots from the Wireless Telecommunication Overlay District. To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning map, Section 200.3.1.1B, by making the following change. Amend Assessor's Parcel Map 24, Block A, Lots 4, 4.1, and 4.4, consisting of a total of plus or minus forty-two point one eight acres for properties located at 92, 98, and 106 North Side Road, currently included in the Wireless Telecommunication Facilities Overlay, be removed from the Wireless Telecommunications Facilities Overlay District. The proposed zoning map change is as shown on the attached map, or whatever action relative thereto or thereon. This is sponsored by the Planning Board, and it refers to the second map in your packet. Do we have a motion?
Madam Moderator?
Yes, sir. Mr. Fontaine.
I'd like to make a motion to pass, to accept Article Nine as written.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. May I have the recommendation of the Planning Board? Mr. Fontaine.
Madam Moderator, Bill Fontaine. The Planning Board would like to recommend this. This is close to Mr. Eastman's property. The wireless telecommunications overlay district was established back in January 1998, and as I understand it, it was contingent or on the same property as Verizon property back then. And so everything was just covered with this wireless overlay, and we're looking to update it to represent the underlying properties in that area. And all of those properties now have houses, and they're all agricultural as the underlying zoning of the, of those properties.
Thank you. Is that an active wireless communication tower there?
I think there is one there, yeah.
Thank you.
But this is just to remove the overlay district from these properties, 4, 4.1, and 4.4. There's still over a hundred acres of telecommunications, wireless telecommunications overlay district.
Thank you.
That remain.
Thank you very much. So we have the recommendation of the Planning Board and a little more information. Two-thirds vote is needed. Is there anything else to be said on this matter? Hearing none. All those in favor, please vote by pressing one, yes. Those opposed, please vote by pressing two. Please vote now. Ten seconds remaining. Please stop voting. Forty-nine voted in the affirmative, two voted no, for a total of fifty-one voters. The motion carries. Article Ten, Zoning Bylaw Amendment. Amend Section 200, 6.9 subdivision proposals of the zoning bylaw. To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw, Section 6.9 subdivision proposals, by adding, quote, "All subdivision proposals and development proposals in the floodplain overlay district shall be reviewed to assure that," end quote, immediately following the wording of Section 200, 6.9 subdivision proposals, or take any action relative thereto or thereon. This is sponsored by the Planning Board. Do we have a motion?
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Fontaine.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Article Ten as written.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. May I have the recommendation of the Planning Board?
Madam Moderator, Bill Fontaine, Planning Board. I know everyone's very eager for the door prizes that await after this article, so I really don't want to spend a lot of time on this one. But we're adding seventeen words into a very, your town bylaws are very large. Zoning and subdivisions probably takes up forty percent of them. We're adding seventeen words literally just in the, in the parenthesis, in the, in the motion here. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything to be said on this matter? Mr. Sage.
I would love to know what it is going to assure that. I would love to know what it is going to assure that.
It's, it's all about the wetland uses that are in the subdivision regulations that are already printed there and have been accepted. This is just introduces the wetland parameters that need to be followed.
Could you please come to the microphone? We have a... Thank you.
Mr. Sage, the, through the moderator, the, this introduces the wetland provisions in the subdivision bylaws that have already been approved.
So it ensures that things are going to be followed.
Exactly, yes. Yeah, no changes to the wetlands provisions, just literally introducing it because this was brought up because the state didn't approve some of the language in here until this introductory, these introductory words were added to the, to that bylaw 6.9.
So are you saying the state has requested that we include that language?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so we're incorporating floodplain and recognition of wetlands into this section of the zoning bylaw?
Yeah.
Thank you. Is there anything else to be said on this matter? Okay, a two-thirds vote is needed, so all those in favor, please use the green button. All those opposed, please use the red button and vote now. Please stop voting. But don't leave. 48 voted in the affirmative, 2 voted negative out of a total of 50. So we have the two-thirds majority needed and the motion carries. I will do an official adjournment of, call for an adjournment of the meeting before we do the, the door prize drawing, so bear with us for just one more minute. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Madam Moderator, Kurt Maskus, 72 Eight-Foot Road.
Mr. Maskus.
I'd like to congratulate our new town council on making through town meeting without having to say a word.
My kind of re-adjourn.
You have, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Okay, so stick around ready. We're going to have our town council select the winning winner. So Bob, put your finger on the number here without looking. Yep.
There my finger.
Forever. Okay, hold on. So if you are near seat number 24, I don't know where seat number 24 is. It's marked on the front of your chair. Who has seat number 24? Or close to it? Does anybody know where seat number 24 is? This is 100th up here.
If we can cancel the meeting in October. We'll see you in November.
Someone. Seat number 24, is it over here? Mr. Smith, what's the seat next to you? 1 through 10, there's no 24? All right, we're going with row 5, seat number 20. Is there a 20? All right, I'm going to award the prize in the absence to the young person who joined us for town meeting, which means it pays to show up and vote and be here with your parents to learn more about the process. So here you go. Thank you all for coming.